Well, good morning. This is Mayor Rod Chagas. I'll call the meeting to order at nine oh one for May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one. And I trust everybody had a good, long weekend with the continuation of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Parkland County is continuing to conduct our meetings using electronic communication under Parkland County's meeting procedure by law two zero one five dash zero six. And section one nine nine of the Municipal Government Act. We'll begin the meeting with today's roll calls. I'll ask each member of council by division to confirm their attendance by saying present. And one will record which members are here. Councillor Jensen did indicate she would not be attended in attendance today, but I will ask that question. Councillor Jensen, if you are online, please indicate so. Moving to Division Three Councillor Kabasik.
Councillor Kabasik, Division Three, present.
Division Four Councillor, Councillor Hollins.
Present.
Division Five Councillor McNabb.
Present.
Division Six Councillor Melnick. So we'll have the records show that all members of council are present with the exception of Councillor Jensen. And I would ask that everybody please ensure that their microphones are muted unless you've been called on to speak. So we will follow the following procedures to ensure transparency and fairness. So I will introduce the items or agenda item, have the interim chief administrative officer speak to that. Then I'll ask a member of council to put forth the motion. When the motion is on the floor, all members of council will have an opportunity to speak to that item. Once that debate has concluded, I will ask members of council if they're in favor or against the motion. And then I'll declare the motion either carried or failed. So at this time, I will ask Councillor Kabasik to provide this morning's inspirational reflection.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During our council meeting today, may we have the gift of good judgment to direct us in making accurate decisions for the progression of the county. May we have the courage to fulfill our responsibility with honesty and integrity, and may our first concern be for the good of all of the people.
Thank you, Councillor Kabasik. So on today's agenda, we do have the following items. Item four point one is the adoption of the May eleventh, two thousand and twenty one council meeting minutes. At nine fifteen, under item five point one is a standing item, and that's public input. To ten o'clock, under agenda item five point two, we have a scheduled appointment, and that is with the Meridian Housing Foundation. Item A one, we have Meridian Housing Foundation request for funding. Item C one is by law two zero two one dash one seven, that's Legend Estates Overlay Amendment. Item C two is rescinding council norms and value policy C dash A D two zero. Also, council orientation policy C dash eight D one eight. And the Code of Conduct for Council and Public Committee Members Policy C dash A D two one. Item C three is the Collaborative Economic Development Oversight Committee, and that's a council member appointment. Item D one is Resource Management Grant Funding. Item G one is Street Lighting Request, and that's for Moonlight Bay and Waltham Beach. Item eight point one is Rural Municipalities Alberta Contact Newsletter. Item eight point two is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Update. Item eight point three is Committee Reports. I'll now ask members of council if there's any additions or deletions to today's agenda, and I'll start with Councillor Kabasik.
Mr. Chair, I have no additions. I understand the administration will be speaking to cancelling our June first committee at the whole meeting, but I'll just leave that to administration. I have nothing.
Thank you. Councillor Hollins.
Nothing to add, nothing to delete. Thank you.
Councillor McNabb.
Nothing from me. Thank you.
And Councillor Melnick.
No additions or deletions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Swain, are there any additions or deletions from administration today's agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Administration would like to add one item to the agenda today. It's the cancellation of the June first, two thousand and twenty one committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Can I get a member of council to move a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councillor Kabasik, Division Three, I'll move the agenda be adopted with the addition by administration as as information. Thank you.
So the motion is to adopt the agenda as amended. I'd ask members of council to indicate whether they're in favor or supportive of that motion by raising your hand. Those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move on to today's consent agenda. And on those, on the consent agenda is item four point one, which is the adoption of the May eleventh, two thousand and twenty one council meeting minutes. Item C three, the Collaborative Economic Development Oversight Committee. Item eight point one, Rural Municipalities Alberta Contact Newsletter. And item eight point two, the Canadian Federation of Municipalities Update. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent agenda today?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councillor Melnick, Division Six, I'd like to remove item C three from the agenda, please. From the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Councillor Melnick. So if I can get a mover to for a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Daryl Hollins, Division Four, I move the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you, Councillor Hollins. Please indicate if you're in favor of this motion by raising your hand. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. So with that, we'll move to today's agenda and we'll move to legislative matters. And section, section C and item C one, Ms. Swain, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite Karen Oxley, current planner, along with support from Stephen Vegernicki, Senior Planner, and Nancy Domagen, Director of Planning and Development Services, to take you through the Legends Estates Bylaw Amendment and answer any questions council may have. Thank you, Ms. Oxley.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Ms. Swain. I'm Karen Oxley, and I'm here to present to you this morning for first reading and to set a public hearing date regarding proposed bylaw two thousand and twenty one dash one seven, which are minor text amendments to section one point, or sorry, ten point five of the Legend Estates Overlay within the land use by law. The proposed text amendments are considered minor in nature and are being recommended by Planning and Development Services, Engineering Services, and have been reviewed and are supported by external legal counsel. The text amendments remove some of the requirements that restrict development within the Legend Estates subdivision and overlay, and reflect the capital infrastructure work that was undertaken by the county in summer of two thousand and twenty. In conclusion, administration is requesting that council provide first reading to proposed bylaw two thousand and twenty one dash one seven, and to set a public hearing date for June twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, at nine thirty A M in council chambers or virtually to receive additional public input on proposed bylaw two thousand and twenty one dash one seven. That concludes my short presentation, and administration would be happy to respond to any questions of council. As Ms. Swain noted, Mr. Fedjarnicki and Ms. Domagen are also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oxley, for that. Can I get a mover for the first motion?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's Councillor John McNabb, Division Five. And I'll make the, I'll put forward the motion by law two thousand and twenty one dash seventeen, receive first reading.
Thank you. And I'll open up for questions or comments for first reading. One question for administration. I know there was a third-party consulting firm that also was involved in this. So we do know that there's going to be significantly more development occurring in both the city of Spruce Grove, Atchison, and and Stony Plain as well. And a lot of that water, that storm water, is directed towards Big Lake. As we see additional growth, is, was that taken a look at and considered what, whether there would be any future implications from development on this matter that's before us in regards to the Legends Estates? Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, I will need to defer to probably Engineering Services on that one, on those details. Or possibly, Ms. Domagen.
Thanks, Ms. Oxley. I know Rob McGowan's on the line, and he can likely speak to some of that. And just as of note, as part of the regional plan with Stony Plain and Spruce Grove, that will also be an area that we are looking further into, but I'll pass it over to Rob McGowan, our General Manager of Operations, to provide some information on that.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Through you and to the mayor and all of council. The stormwater management design work that was completed on Legend Estates will adequately accommodate the drainage within the subdivision itself. The greater issue and that you point out is the overall stormwater management for the entire area, including the Big Lake and Adam Creek area. And we are currently working with and having a fulsome integrated stormwater management plan with Stony Plain and Spruce Grove to ensure that the greater area is accommodated because, as you pointed out, there is development happening within Spruce Grove and Stony Plain that impact the overall conveyance system. So we are working with our municipal partners to ensure that that the stormwater management plan is integrated for all three municipalities and accommodate the area. But insofar as Legend Estates, we believe that the stormwater management plan and the design and work that we undertook in that subdivision will adequately accommodate development moving forward.
Thank you for for those comments, Mr. McGowan. I'll just look to council to see if there's any additional questions or comments. And I am not seeing any. I'd ask members of council to raise your hand if you're in support of first reading, please. And that is carried. Can I get a mover for the second motion that's attached to this agenda item, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'll put forward the motion that the public hearing be scheduled for June twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, at nine thirty in the council chambers to hear public comments on by law two thousand and twenty one dash seventeen, and that's Councillor Melnick, Division Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Melnick. Any comments or questions regarding this motion? And I'm not seeing any. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And that is carried. Thank you. And we are at nine fourteen, so I will move to our standing item under delegations and five point one and public input. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to address council. And I know we do have two registered speakers this morning. We do have a requirement through our virtual meetings that residents do pre-schedule. And so our first speaker this morning is Mr. Corey Jespersen. And Mr. Jespersen, I would ask that you unmute yourself, and the floor is yours.
There you go. I'm going to assume you can all hear me well. I can start the video here if you want. There we go. Okay, well, thank you for letting me talk to you guys this morning about a situation that a couple of you are familiar with. I met with Phyllis and I talked with Rod about the specific situation that we are experiencing that I think is identify sort of a bigger picture problem. I think that agriculture has and will have in the future. And some of that is being addressed with this, the ramp program or the Regional Agriculture Master Plan, which I'm involved in. And so specifically, our situation is, you know, we're in the Adam Creek Structure Plan. The area that we're in is specifically designated as agriculture restricted. The intent in that structure plan is to provide the opportunity for, you know, intensive agriculture. We have a dairy, we have a greenhouse, we do potatoes, we have a sod operation, the the only irrigated sod operation in the county. So we're doing what we feel is, you know, the the intent of the the area that we're in and the intent of the county to do intensive agriculture, higher value, that sort of thing. The issue that we're running into, specifically in my situation here, is that I believe because of how the the area is zoned, it leaves some some interpretation maybe to developers that they can do certain things on these lands. And then that brings in and raises the egg, the value of that land beyond what even an intensive and, you know, agriculture operation like ours can can almost justify to pay. And so I think when I look at the the structure plan and the discretionary uses is where I think the problem is specifically in our area because the the area around us is just getting, and we're going to call it littered, I'm going to call it littered with RV storages. Have you guys experienced these RV storages popping up all over the place? Part of the problem, I think, is that that originally was probably the intent was to allow farmers who likely were already storing RVs on their property to maybe, you know, for to diversify, do sort of things, but to sort of legitimize that by giving them, you know, a license or whatever to do these sort of things. But now what seems to have happened is that these basically are commercial operations just half a mile east of us on the same zone type area of land that we're in. It was a twenty acre field. We had put potatoes in there, great soil. It's a twenty acre field, so it's small, and that area has been cut up by, you know, service roads and that sort of thing. But it's on agriculture land discretionary use allowed to put RV storages in. So what happens is because I guess the county now requires these RV storages to be on gravel bases, to be fenced, to have, you know, a dugout for water, fire department, that sort of thing. These on ag lands come and they strip all the black soil off, pile it up, and get rid of it, and bringing egg, bringing, you know, gravel and make the base. The intent of protecting ag land is for the soil. It's, and so now these discretionary uses for ag land are, they're destroying the the soil. Like it cannot never be returned back to agriculture. I don't think the intent of having the discretionary use for RV storages is to remove all the soil and basically make a commercial operation on ag lands. I don't think that was the intent, but that seems to be what's happening. And certainly that is in our specific situation because we have all of these RV storages around us. Those guys are, it's very profitable. I think they should probably be in a commercial area. But they're specifically in our area, they're the ones that are outbidding us for this agriculture land and putting the squeeze, you know, squeeze on us financially. That land in particular, it's it's irrigated, we've got a water license, we've got a permit to irrigate high-value crops. The first conversation I have with the new owner is like, hey, you know, maybe you have a use for the topsoil when we come and strip it off. And I'm just like, we need to protect this agriculture land. And being part of that ramp, that ramp master plan program, that is the intent, is that these prime agriculture pieces need to be identified. And I think that's where it starts is like almost quarter by quarter, even piece by piece, these highly productive, the top ag land needs to have no discretionary uses. It is for agriculture production, period. Anything beyond that, they're going to have to jump, should have to jump through incredible amount of hoops and regulations to show that there's merit to taking that prime agriculture land out of agriculture to put, hopefully not RV storages, but in our situation, that's, you know, that's the the intent and the idea. So I guess that's, I just wanted to express, you know, I sort of my frustration because it's hitting me personally. So I now, you know, I need to, you know, make my voice heard, but I think agriculture in general is, you know, getting these give these pressures and the regional agriculture master plan, the guys are doing, they understand this, and that's why they're really, you know, trying to identify these prime agriculture lands and absolutely those in a hundred years from now, we can still be growing crops and doing that sort of thing on this land. Once it's, you know, stripped and turned into a commercial operation for RV storages or that sort of thing. I mean, that can't be, that can't be recovered. So I guess that's, I just wanted to make more of you aware of that, but I think on the county side, you guys need to be absolutely clear that when it's prime agriculture, top quality ag land, discretionary uses, just open the door, the thin edge of the wedge to, you know, letting, oh, this little bit of a development and then, you know, it just expands from there. And I think it just becomes more difficult. So that's, that's what I have to say. I'm thankful that I had the opportunity to speak to you and make you aware of it specifically. I am, I am personally going to make it very, very difficult for the new owner to do anything there if I at all possibly can because my heart's in agriculture. And, you know, we just don't want to see this kind of land being, you know, taken over and used for other, you know, purposes, which specifically these RV storages, they're driving us crazy. There's five of them within, you know, a minute of us and they're just all over the place. And I mean, they don't have, I mean, everybody seems to own one of these things, but certainly when you talk to the neighbors and people around, they're like, why do we need to keep having these things, you know, pop up all around us? And I mean, people need to store the RVs, but these are commercial operations that are doing things on ag land. And I don't think that ever was the intent of that discretionary use. So I'll probably stop rambling now, but thanks for the opportunity to speak to you guys this morning.
Mr. Jespersen, thank you for taking the time this morning to address council. And as you said, the regional agriculture master plan that's being developed by the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board is looking at exactly that, is trying to ensure that we protect and conserve prime agricultural lands from fragmentation, which developments like this do happen, as well as conserving the larger tracts of land to ensure that we do have safe, secure local food supplies for future generations and also recognizing that agriculture, just because a piece of land is raw, doesn't mean it isn't development. Agriculture is development and it supports and enables economic diversification through attraction of large commercial entities such as agri-food businesses, which creates significant tax revenues and employment opportunities. So thank you for taking the time this morning.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Ms. Heather Stewart. Ms. Stewart, if you can unmute your mic and the floor is yours. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. It's interesting Cory's talking about RVs because that's what I'm here to talk about as well. So, and if Cory's still listening, I think there's probably that commercial use is probably a waterfall from other counties restricting storage of RVs. So they're moving into Parkland County. So what I want to talk about specifically is Ascot Beach and the Woodlands area, and we have a problem out there with RVs as well. People are buying these lots and putting RVs on them. I know Parkland County has a three RV storage, being the operative word, limit. But if you drive around Ascot Beach and the Woodlands, there's five, six, seven RVs. They're not being stored, they're being used and the vehicles that come with them. And the ATVs as well. So as a homeowner out there, you know, and paying, paying good taxes, I just thought that the county should know that a lot of these lots are being renting, they're renting to RV owners. So the people aren't paying much tax on their raw land, but their little parcel of land, but they're collecting $1,500 or $2,000 a summer. And they're trying to get in as many of these RVs as possible. So they pay their little tax, which is, you know, on $113,000 lot, and that's what they're worth. They might be paying, I don't, I'm not sure, $6, $900 tax. And they're making lots of money renting them out. So the problem for us is not only the rental, the bylaw being broken and pushed, like Cory said, if you open up, if you leave a little wedge, they push, 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 is infrastructure damage. Because if you have four RVs, three, four, five RVs on a lot with 20 people on a little lot, they all have their vehicles and their ATVs, they're ripping up the parkland. And they're putting in, which is allowed because they're putting in docks and moorings in the in the property at Ascot Beach that's municipally owned. Which is allowed. I've looked into it, although County Parkland does require authorization of land use. It's only $75 and I can guarantee you that probably none of them have registered to put these these boathoists and docks in. So that's another thing I thought maybe Parkland should look into is if there was authorization for all of these docks. The other thing I wanted to say is once you look at Alberta Beach, I've looked all over Alberta, every county from Alberta Beach, Westlock, Watasquaw, Pigeon Lake, Sylvan Lake, Mammio Beach, every lake. They have a one RV limit in their residential and country subdivisions and lakeshore subdivisions. And I think it's because of this. I think they've headed it off because of what was happening. Because they're not paying a dime for infrastructure, these people. They're just, they're just using it. And you're not collecting very much tax from the empty land. So that is what my point was, if that could be looked into. Again, there's a lot of RVs out there with ATVs. And so we've seen kids riding around without helmets. I'm a nurse, so I've got a problem with that because I've seen them in a merge. A lot of drinking. The police were out, the RCMP were out just this weekend because three o'clock in the morning, one of these places with four or five RVs, they were partying all night. Last weekend, they left with their fire going. So we are looking across at Tomahawk and my husband noticed it, so he went over and put it out. But we've got problems out there that I think need to be addressed. Thank you for letting me speak and I can identify with Cory. It's very frustrating. We have, we have residents out there between 87 and 92 years of age that are looking at this, that have been out there since the 60s and they're looking at this, paying their taxes more than they, you know, would have paid in the city. And it's a crisis, really is. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart, thank you for taking the time this morning. I do want to advise you that all of the infractions, bylaw infractions, land use bylaw infractions are complaint driven here. You know, you brought up the, or made a comment regarding the docks and wondered if they're authorized. Parkland County, as you very well may know, has a number of lakes and there's a number of docks. So on a number of these areas for enforcement, our community peace officers investigate when there's a complaint driven. So certainly we encourage our residents. Hopefully they're not frivolous complaints that come because sometimes that does occur. But when there are legitimate concerns, please contact our community peace officers and enforcement services and they'll investigate those issues. Once again, I guess the other thing I just want to advise is this Parkland County continually looks at revising and amending our land use bylaws. And when there are opportunities for public to bring forth concerns such as you now with the number of RVs, that those things are considered. So it is through public engagement and our residents addressing council through public input and other means that these are brought forward. So thank you very much for your participations.
Thank you.
With that, we'll continue with today's agenda item and we'll move to item C point two and I'll turn it over to Ms. Swain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barb Williams, manager of legislative services, is prepared to present the rescinding of council norms and values policy C-AD20, council orientation policy C-AD18, and council code of conduct for council members and committee members policy C-AD21, and answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. As Ms. Swain has already indicated today before us, we do have the three policies that administration has recommended to be rescinded. And we'd like to note that on October 6th at a committee of the whole meeting, these three policies have been presented to council or committee of the whole at that time. The policies that are identified are policies that are also covered under code of conduct bylaws as well. And that was a bylaw as a change to the municipal government act in 2017. So with that, before us today, we do have the recommendation for proposed motions that council council norms and values policy C-AD20 be rescinded. We also have that council orientation policy C-AD18 be rescinded. And final motion is that council code of conduct for council and public committee members policy C-AD21 be rescinded. I would be happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Could I get a move on the first motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Councilor Kabasik, Division 3. I will move that the council norms and values policy C-AD20 be rescinded. And just speaking, commenting, as Ms. Williams noted, policies that we're dealing with here, council, committee, have the whole house discussed these and there have been changes to the municipal government act that make these redundant. They are covered there. So I'll put that motion on the floor.
Thank you, Councilor Kabasik. Open it up for comments or questions from members of council. And I am not seeing any. I do have a couple of comments and they're not specific to the rescinding of the three council policies that we do have. But I do have a comment to make regarding one of the other attachments and that's bylaw 201805 Code of Conduct. And I apologize, I wasn't at the committee, the whole meeting in October. But I'm looking at section 36 and it speaks about complaints regarding the conduct of a member of council. And subsection four of section 36 states that a complaint will be addressed by the mayor, deputy mayor, or if it's if it's the mayor's conduct, it'll be addressed by the mayor or the deputy mayor if it's the mayor's conduct that's being complained, a complaint has been received. But it's silent, this bylaw is silent. If there's an allegation that comes forward that involves both the mayor and deputy mayor. And I took an opportunity to take a look at some of the other bylaws that other municipalities have. And there are provisions in those where circumstances, and it might be a rare thing, hopefully it never occurs. But there are clauses put in there to address those type of situations as well. So I think at some point, perhaps we could take a look at potentially making revisions or amendments to this bylaw. Also, the other thing that's missing on this one from what I'm seeing, if there is an investigation of a member of council, we want to ensure that that individual has been afforded procedural fairness. And if there's allegations, there might be requirement or that council member may want to secure legal counsel. And again, if if an individual chooses to do so, I believe that could or should be at the councilor's own expanse. However, if it's determined that no action is going to be taken, that the allegations are unfounded or groundless, I think there has to be provisions where council can consider reimbursing that member of council as well. Also do want to speak to the CAO bylaw, which is attachment number five on here. And section five, which speaks to the powers, duties and functions of the CAO, subsection seven. It states that the CAO exercises all the powers, duties and function of a council of a municipality as prescribed under the act, including delegation of a municipal assessor under the municipal assessor bylaw in effect. Now, the way I read it and I'm, you know, this is my interpretation. I'm certainly open to hearing others' perspective. But the way I read this is the CAO has the powers and can execute all the roles and functions of council. And I don't believe that was the intent of this. And also reading this clause, it does state that the CAO can delegate those powers and duties and functions to the municipal assessor. So if you read that literally, the municipal assessor can assume those powers as well. So I think that also needs to be looked at and revisited at some point in the future. So those are just my comments regarding regarding the other attachments that are present here. I have no, no problems or issues with the rescinding of the policies that are brought forward in any of the other motions, though. So I will just look quickly again to other members of council, Councilor Melnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess for myself, I don't see that as the same interpretation underneath the CAO. We all understand that council has one employee and underneath those duties as outlined in the MGA and through that, that is very specific as to what the CAO duties are. But I guess if administration would like to comment or if they want time to think about that with Barb Williams being the lead expert in that field, I would like to hear from Barb or reserve that for another time. Thanks.
Thank you to the mayor and directed to Councilor Melnick. Yes. What we will do is we will take the information under advisement. We will take another review of all the bylaws that are discussed today and take more of a look at them for any amendments. The powers of the CAO is that, you are correct, they are, that CAO is the only employee of council. The CAO has the opportunity to delegate, and I believe that that was the intent of the bylaws, that there is a delegation of authority there.
Any comments from other members of council? And I'm not seeing any. I will ask members of council to raise their hand if they're in support of the first motion. And that is carried. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council orientation policy C-AD18 be rescinded.
Thank you. Opening up for comments or questions? And I'm not seeing any. Again, please raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion. And that is carried. And I'm looking for a mover for the third and final motion on the second.
Mr. Mayor, it's Councilor John McNabb, Division 5, that the code of conduct for council and public committee members policy C-AD21 be rescinded.
Thank you. And questions or comments on this motion? I am not seeing any. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion. And that is carried unanimously as well. Thank you. Ms. Swain will move to item C point three, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I believe, sorry, I'm just reading my notes here on C3. I believe Barb Williams, manager of legislative services, is prepared to review the council member appointment and answer any questions that council may have. And I'm also here to answer questions on the collaborative economic development committee. As per the council member appointments, we do have to have a formal motion to appoint yourself, the mayor, as the appointee on the collaborative economic development group. to appoint yourself, the mayor, as the appointee on the Collaborative Economic Development Group. But I will pass it over. I know Councilor Melnick may have some comments, but perhaps I'll pass it over to Ms. Williams first if she has anything else to add.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. To the mayor and members of council, Ms. Swain has already alluded to the reason as to why this item has been presented to council today is to appoint the mayor as on the Oversight Committee. There is a memorandum of understanding that was presented to council on March 23rd. The memorandum of understanding outlines that the Oversight Committee will be a committee of mayors or alternates of each of the partner municipalities. And then there is also that they report to council as well as the delegates, councils, and partners are the final decision of the authority. We felt that it would be appropriate that administration include a alternate for the mayor as well. In the event that the mayor, who is appointed to this as the memorandum of understanding, speaks to, is not able to attend, we do have a deputy mayor within the rotation that is set out at the organizational meeting to be also able to attend. So before us, we do have, the first motion is that the mayor be appointed to the Collaborative Economic Development Oversight Committee effective April 12th, 2021, to the October 26th, 2021 organizational meeting. And then the second motion is that deputy mayor, in the appointed term, be appointed as alternate to the Collaborative Economic Development Oversight Committee effective April 12th, 2021, to the October 26th organizational meeting. Mr. Mayor, I now conclude my presentation and is able to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Can I get a mover for that first motion, please?
It's Councilor Melnick. I'll put forward the motion, and then I would like to speak to it. I'll put forward the motion that Mayor Shagis be appointed to the Collaborative Economic Development Oversight Committee effective April 12th, 2021, to the October 26th, 2021 organizational meeting. And if I may, so on the outset, I wanted to state that council individually and collectively have been elected to represent the best interest of the residents of Parkland County. The mayor currently sits on a number of committees that occupy much of his time. And in considering this as on our goal, which is to ensure that councils share the workload, I am questioning the process as to selecting a representative on not only this committee but other regional committees. And I understand that it is part of the MOU that dictates, that says that the mayor or an alternate. But I understand that the MRB committees generally represent, have our mayor as a representative, but this isn't an EMRB committee. And once again, I'm confident that all other members can represent Parkland County effectively. I just think that we need to be thinking a little bit more wholeheartedly about including all of council members in some of these regional committees. Having this same voice at the table, I can understand that there's relationships that are being built. But I do believe that it actually does exclude council members individually a bit, more than what I think it should be. My second point is, the honorarium for this committee, was it accounted for in our budget during our budget? I know it will be a small amount at this time. Or is that part of the mayor's full-time salary? Thanks.
Through the mayor to Councilor Melnick, on the last question about compensation, I believe you were asking about compensation for attendance of these meetings, correct? I believe that would be paid through our per diem system.
Yes, that's my understanding. And I'm, you know, I understand that through the budgeting process, we lock and account for this. But I guess really, my bigger piece really is about ensuring that we have the work of all of council participating in the regional committees. And unfortunately, I don't think that's what happens. At the EMRB table, often what happens is those sitting at the table create the rules around who's going to sit on the new committee. Now, a mayor doesn't sit on all of them, but mayors generally are sitting. However, in Edmonton, they often have a lot of counselors that. But it's about the workload, it's about sharing the workload, and also sharing the knowledge and sharing the the responsibility for all of Parkland County. We all represent different areas of Parkland County, and we all are supposed to speak for all of Parkland County. But I know that we all come with our own biases, and we all come with our own thought processes as to how things should be done around the region. And I do believe that not necessarily just this committee, but our committees in general should be reviewed in a different light around the regions than what they are. Thanks.
Councilor McNapp?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I can support that concept in regards to having an overall conversation about these type of committees and whether or not the workload could be shared, you know. And I'm very excited about the committees that I got placed on in this term. You know, they're a little more challenging, and I like that type of a model. And, you know, I'd also like to make a comment about the information provided for this Collaborative Economic Development Oversight Committee. There's, it would have been nice to see a little bit more information provided within this document to help others ourselves and other public members understand what that is. And, you know, we just got a couple of simple motions here for placing somebody on there. But it would have been nice, this document, to have some history behind this, what terms of reference are going to be, just to help the general public understand what that is all about. And if the information was there. And I would say that with anything coming forward, whether it's this type of a committee member placement or any other committee placement, especially with the EMRB stuff, it's I imagine the general public out there struggles a lot to understand how much time that actually consumes for you and other mayors of the region and other staff members of the region, how much time is actually being consumed under that perspective of the EMRB. And this is just another one that's, you know, just burning up some more time. And what we're going to get out of there is something I would like to understand a little bit better. So, yeah, I would definitely support the concept about having a wholesome conversation about who should go to these committees. And it all helps with each member of council participating on a different level, too. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilor McNapp. Other comments from members of council? No, I think that's a great idea. You know, historically, if you take a look at some of the appointments, whether it's Division 1, which historically, since my time, has always been appointed to RBA, for example. Division 6 Council has always been appointed to PARZ and Evergreen. And, you know, RBA, that's a number of municipalities. Again, it's a regional thing, same as Evergreen and PARZ. That's a regional collaborative venture with other municipalities. And I think there's, you know, maybe that's something at the next organizational meeting for new council to have that discussion and take a look at having a representation more equally distributed. And I think that also lends itself to provide an opportunity for members of council to be aware and more in tune with some of the things that are occurring in other areas outside their own divisions as well. Thank you. I'll just look to members of council once again, if there's any additional comments. Councilor Kabasik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of the questions, part of the comment that was raised was in around the number of committees that are taking up time with the Edmonton Metro Regional Board. Those payments are made outside, over and above what area mayors are receiving. And the committees seem to be self-propelling. I know Parkland County had a concern with budgets, and there would be, we didn't support extra work that maybe the EMRB was over its mandate, overstepping its mandate. And there was a lot of busy work or a lot of outside work that was put in place so that EMRB was expanding its mandate. And I know that when the Shared Investment, Shared Benefit Committee was established, the EMRB was looking for representatives to that committee. But all members, all mayors who serve on the board also wanted to be serving on their side, this Shared Investment Committee. And I know the mayor yourself, when this MOU came out with the Collaborative Economic Development Oversight Committee, the question was raised, how is this different from the Shared Investment Committee? So there's one committee that's established, all members serve on it, and then there's another spinoff from it. So it begets itself, and it becomes a very, very heavy commitment of time, and that all payments that are made to this committee are over and above mayoral payments, and they're recorded separately. They aren't included in the compensations for the offices of mayors within the regional board. So it is becoming an issue, and I certainly would support a discussion about this as well. In terms of sharing knowledge and workload, we do have committees where the same members are picking them up, whether they be RV or the Evergreen, or whether even the library board. Those types of committees continue to be the same appointments. And, you know, maybe it's time to look at those being shared and opened up and sharing the workflows. I know we've made an effort, Mr. Mayor, you've made an effort in the past to do that for council, and we do need to discuss it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and, you know, we're talking about, and what we've always tried to do, ensure that there's fairness and equity in the number of committees that members are appointed to. So like for myself, I have one internal committee, and that's the West Interlake District Committee. And I sit on the EMRB SISB and preside over the task force. So I've got four committees. And yes, the EMRB does take significant amount of time. And on many occasions, there are multiple meetings, so SISB and RAMP and the EMRB Board meeting, quite often they're scheduled on the same day to those meetings. With the EMRB, the per diems are less than what we receive as council members. So the council members, you know, you're getting for a four-hour meeting, $249, or above a four-hour meeting, you get $249. With the EMRB, regardless of how many meetings you have, how long those meetings are, you get $200 per day. There's been times, and I brought this up before, where it's been with travel included, close to 13 hours. If that was at Parkland County, it'd be just under $350. I get $200. And for me, it's not an issue of the time. It's something I'm passionate about. But certainly having the conversation about, you know, appointment to external and internal committees, I think, is something that we need to discuss or new council needs to discuss. Councilor Melnick?
Thank you. And I did, I just wanted to open it up, just so that there is an understanding that there is a great many other members of council that would like to and believe that they should be participating in a lot more of the regional discussion. I'm very fortunate to sit on the tri-council meeting with Mayor Shagis on that meeting. So I'm very fortunate to have a little bit more of that piece going on, where you're looking at developing your region as a whole. But I do believe that there's great insight from other council members, and I think that having that other input would be valued and would serve Parkland County residents, which is what we're here for, is to serve Parkland County residents. I think it would be well-done, well-served if we did review that process at the next, prior to the next organizational meeting, so that, you know, we're in an election year, and it's going to be very difficult. There's going to be new members at the table. There's going to be many new members at the tables, I'm sure. And they could be drinking from fire hoses. We all know how that is. And I do think that some of that discussion should happen ahead of time. Thanks.
Councilor Kabasik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You had mentioned mileage claims, and I'm just going to ask a question to Ms. Swain. I've been asked this question, and I haven't had an opportunity to raise it anywhere. Council members are paid mileage for attending meetings. There also is an extra mileage, an extra travel allowance if you live more than 40 kilometers or if the office, the office of the mayor. Has that been suspended during COVID, that payment? Because there is no, there's been no travel. We're attending meetings virtually. So I've been asked if that's been suspended during COVID. Otherwise, you're looking at extra payments per month when there's been no travel.
Through the mayor to Councilor Kabasik, I do not believe that has been suspended during COVID. I do believe that council members are still traveling here and there during times of COVID. But unless council can confirm differently, I don't believe that's been suspended.
I certainly don't believe we're traveling, the intention was for traveling to meetings. I mean, there is some visits to resident areas, but I've had comment that that's, that should have been suspended, then that's unacceptable. I guess it's up to council to decide, but I've been asked if that was, it should be suspended during COVID.
Any further comments on motion number one? Seeing none, I'll ask members of council to raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Can I get a mover for the second motion?
Sure. I'll move that the deputy mayor, in the appointed term, be appointed as alternate to the Collaborative Economic Development Oversight Committee effective April 12th, 2021, to the October 26th, 2021 organizational meeting. And that's moved by Councilor Kabasik, Division 3.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on this motion? Not seeing any. Please raise your hand if you're in favor. And that is carried unanimously. We do have a scheduled appointment at 10 o'clock under delegations, that is item 5.2, and this is Meridian Housing Foundation. I will turn it over to Ms. Swain just for the introduction, and thinking by 10 o'clock, we'll have our presenter ready to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do believe our presenter has joined the call. So I'd like to welcome Ms. Lori Anne St. Arnaud, Executive Director with the Meridian Housing Foundation, to our meeting today. She is here to present a foundation funding request. I recognize that this item had discussion at a previous meeting. So I'd like to note that Parkland County has reviewed our capital cost share policy in coordination with the Meridian Housing Foundation. We've determined that there were only a couple of key areas from this policy that needed to be addressed through the Meridian Housing Foundation's information they were to provide. So we've asked that the Meridian Housing Foundation provide that information as part of their presentation today. So I will pass it over to Ms. St. Arnaud to provide her presentation today, and then we can open it up to questions.
Good day, everyone. I'm just wanting to ensure that you can see my slide presentation.
We can see it. Thank you.
Lori Anne, we can see your presentation.
Oh, you can? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning, your worship, council members and administration. Thank you for allowing me to be present at today's regular council meeting to speak further to securing of office space for Meridian Housing Foundation. Meridian Housing Foundation remains committed to providing housing and homes for seniors in our community. We are the designated housing management body for residents of our three-member municipalities, offering subsidized and affordable living options. The demand for housing in our region is high and is reflected in our waitlists. We know we cannot meet the needs of every senior resident, but we can definitely serve more. The population of our region is approximately ninety thousand. And soon we will be offering homes to approximately three hundred and fifty seniors. That is a very small fraction. We must be mindful that many of our residents cannot afford the cost of private housing. As these costs grow, so there's a demand for us. The foundation's direction is one of growth and in order to move forward, we require the appropriate resources and tools to do so. I believe the same holds true for yourself as a municipality. If your administration is being faced with pressures or limitations, you would ensure that it is being addressed. As a resident and taxpayer, I have seen changes over time to your own administration building. Meridian Housing Foundation is here to stay. We've been in existence for sixty years and we will continue to be in existence for years to come. The service Meridian Housing Foundation provides requires staff to be onsite and physically available. Face-to-face interviews with seniors are required for completion of the scoring tool to ensure criteria is met and the proper level of housing for the applicant is assigned. The majority of the senior population we deal with had limited to no use of computer technology. Meridian Housing Foundation does not have IT staff nor infrastructure to support any type of remote work. The housing industry is a huge learning curve and best taught hands-on. We have a number of frontline staff providing supports and training is required. Due to the nature of our work, in-person training is preferred and the most effective. Our maintenance team is required to be onsite and space limitations bear impact on their efficiency and time management. In our search for office space, Meridian Housing Foundation was conscious that our bylaws stipulate for the office to remain in the town of Stony Plain. We also do know that municipalities can own property in other municipalities. Therefore, a letter was sent to all member municipalities in December of twenty twenty, inquiring about any opportunities. Two of the three member municipalities responded. One informed Meridian Housing Foundation that no options were available that would meet our needs and the other referenced the library space. Meridian Housing Foundation also reached out to commercial realtors for some assistance. As mentioned in my presentation on April twenty-seventh, we had two options to explore. The criteria communicated in our search expressed seeking a building with approximately six thousand square feet, which would have space for offices, reception, waiting room, intake rooms, boardrooms, equipment supplies room, archive records room, training room, staff lunchroom, public and staff washrooms, IT server room, janitor room. We were looking for a building to meet the needs of our clientele. The building needed to be easy to locate and have ample parking. Barrier-free access from outdoors that carries throughout the interior, as many of our residents we see have some form of aid for mobility. The Stony Plain Alliance Building is a standalone building that meets all of the criteria and more. The additional two thousand square feet is viewed as a positive. We are way better off to have more space than not have enough. Again, in my April twenty-seventh presentation, I made mention that our maintenance department overlooked nine buildings with no adequate space of their own. This could serve as some storage space as a starter. The Stony Plain Alliance Building already has a loading area for an overhead door in the back. I view this as proactive planning. We often see buildings built for the current situation and soon afterwards it is outgrown and additions are being made. This is typical in the construction of schools. They open and soon afterwards, they're busting at the seams. Our research in the Stony Plain Alliance Building also included gathering information and obtaining reports as part of our due diligence. A current phase one environmental site assessment was part of the purchase agreement and has been provided to Meridian Housing Foundation. Meridian Housing Foundation reached out to coordinate appointments to get a commercial building inspection and a hazardous materials assessment done. The key findings are all captured in the PowerPoint slide. The board provided direction in twenty twenty to relocate administration office with a target date of completion in twenty twenty-one. When preparing the twenty twenty-one lodge operating budget, this was taken into consideration and an expense item was added. The amount allocated can be justified from research obtained using lease costs. As a result of relocating the office, we are able to convert two offices back into residence suites for an additional thirty-three thousand dollars of revenue annually. Also, the office space does not rest solely on the lodge budget as an expenditure. Other levels of housing such as the senior self-contained and the affordable housing will be charged a recovery free for office space. Meridian Housing Foundation has willingly worked together with Parkland County staff to review the cost analysis work done to demonstrate results of leasing versus purchasing. We provided the information and data presented to the Meridian Housing Foundation Board of Directors and Parkland County staff inputted it into their own template. Parkland County staff confirmed the buy option being the better of the two options. Meridian Housing Foundation, like yourself, must be transparent and accountable for the way we spend taxpayer money as we are partially funded by taxpayer dollars. There needs to be a level of trust that exists between housing management bodies and member municipalities. At a minimum, there should be trust that the elected official from the member municipality appointed to the Meridian Housing Foundation Board of Directors is doing their due diligence. No different than when they are present at a municipal council meeting. I will commend Counselor McNabb on his due diligence as a board member in being informed on Meridian Housing Foundation matters. Taxpayers put trust in their government. Governments are here to look after the residents. The same holds true for Meridian Housing Foundation. This is something we share in common. The Board of Directors of the Meridian Housing Foundation is responsible for the approval of the Meridian Housing Foundation annual budget. We can easily share the approved budget with our member municipalities administration in the fall. I welcome periodic meetings among all member municipalities to keep the lines of communication open. It is often communicated of the willingness to work together when we're corresponding and it's great to hear. Although we have to also act upon the statement and demonstrate it. We are stronger together. It is very clear how each member municipality operates differently, some raising more questions than others, and I truly respect that. Every time we have a new board member assigned to our board, Meridian Housing Foundation is drilled with lots of questions and we should be. Meridian Housing Foundation has policies and procedures in place. We have expertise in the world of property management overlooking soon-to-be nine buildings. Rest assured, reserves are in place. We are used to being held at a high level of accountability. We go through many audits, inspections, reviews, licensing, reporting, and are compliant with all. Allow us to continue to succeed. We require space to continue the great work we do. I am proud of what Meridian Housing Foundation represents in our community. We have a great reputation. It is witnessed over and over again when families show resistance to move their loved one to a higher level of care because they are happy with the care their loved one is receiving by the foundation. The reality is, Meridian Housing Foundation is moving forward. I'm present today as a recommendation from the board is to purchase the Stony Plain Alliance Building. This involves borrowing with terms exceeding a year, which requires member municipality approval. If the board had recommending, if the board had recommended leasing, I would not be required to come before you. The question to be answered is, will it be through the more favorable option presented and recommended being the purchase option, or will it be at the higher cost option of leasing? I'm asking for Parkland County's mayor and council to support the purchase of office space and seek continued success to take place within the foundation in providing a core service for the residents in our communities. Invest in our residents and let's build strong communities. I'm appreciative and thankful for your time in allowing me to present Meridian Housing Foundation's follow-up case for the purchase of office space. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. St. Arno. If I can get a member of council to put forward the motion, then we'll open it up for comments or questions from Ms. St. Arno.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Darryl Holland is Division Four. I move that the Meridian Housing Foundation presentation be received for information as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will now open it up for comments or questions from members of council. Counselor Melnick.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. St. Arno, for your presentation. You're very, very correct in indicating that we are in this together and and we have a responsibility to ensure that each of us do the appropriate part where it is and and as you identified, there is a different level of possibility of how municipalities look at our files and and we all understand that any capital expenditures are required an approval from council collectively and the municipality, so not just the individual, which is why there was push to have this brought forward in a different manner to our municipalities, just to ensure that you were following the regulations as were outlined for yourselves and for all of our senior foundations. So, so thank you for that. Just looking to say, to see in your budgeting process that you would have done at your level, I'm confident, but I'm just asking actually for clarification and understanding. I'm confident that your operating costs for this new purchase would have been put in the budget you've passed already. Is that correct? Not assuming the, the cost that you were using in your old facility and your current facility, sorry. Thanks for operating for your office space. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. It has been put in the budget twenty twenty-one that has been passed.
Look into the members of council, any additional questions or comments? Ms. St. Arno, I do have a couple of questions for you. In the slide presentation, it talked about sources of revenues and it included, identified the budget, so that'll be requisitions. It also identified additional revenues. So this will be conversion of the existing administrative space for seniors accommodation, I'm assuming. So one question I have is, is all of the administration space that's currently being used, is it suitable and can it be readily converted to seniors lodging? And the second is question I have at this point is under sources of revenue, it says recoveries. Can you just elaborate on recoveries for me, please, and identify specifically what those are? Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Meridian Housing Foundation has exhausted all space within the lodge here. Administration is all located within the lodge currently. We've had to take away actually from our seniors. We've had to take away resident laundry rooms. We've had to take away a janitor room. People are scattered all over, which does pose some problems because of we have some dead space within our building when you're trying to connect to equipment. Our staff wear many hats. We do not have the sufficient staff to even do all the work here. I'm very blessed with what I've had to date. But as mentioned, it's time to move on. In regards to recoveries, we will be able to gain some recoveries from other levels of housing that we operate. We will be able to charge office space recovery from the senior self-contained portfolio as well as the affordable housing portfolio. We're looking, currently that is looking like it will be approximately twenty percent additional recoveries coming from those two portfolios. Please realize that the majority of our staff, the majority of the work falls under lodge. Out of all of our fifty-five staff, I'll say fifty-two are lodge. The rest are, the other three are for our other portfolios. You know, this is something recoveries that will be overlooked every year as we do budgets. It'll depend, we will be able to analyze what the workload towards those two other portfolios are and those will be adjusted accordingly.
Thank you. Actually, I've got Counselor McNabb. Go ahead, Counselor McNabb.
I just was gonna help with a comment that was made. Mayor Shagis, you asked about returning the lodge back to operations and, you know, is there a cost to return the lodge back into having rental space? I think that's was, was part of the question. And if Loriann could speak to that. By understanding that the space being utilized would be very simple to return back to operations of the lodge for it already is living space converted to office. If Loriann could speak to that. And the other question I would have for Loriann moving forward is the requisition dollars for twenty twenty-two. You know, twenty twenty-one for operational is already there, but moving forward, do we, are we going to recognize a large increase in requisition money moving forward for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three? I know you might not know that yet, but if you could speak to that also.
Thank you, Counselor McNabb. The change, the conversion back to residence suites will be very, should be very minimal. Plummings are already, are still intact. It's just a matter of putting up a few walls and I believe our estimate was around the twenty-five thousand max and I think we were pretty I think we were pretty generous in that manner. In regards to further requisitioning down the road, I have to be really honest with you. I cannot guarantee requisitions of going, you know, I can guarantee that requisitions will not be going up for office space, but I can't guarantee of it going up due to other pressures. That is something that we always look at every year and I think we're very mindful of how we do our budgets. We're very mindful of that we are dealing with taxpayer dollars and it has been and will continue to stay at a minimal.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you for that. And that was going to be one of my questions, but I do have another one and I apologize if. this isn't really the appropriate piece, being that this is about capital expenditures, but I am still going to ask because it's around the requisition. So when you collect rent, there is, I know, a formula that is used. But we also understand that there is some individuals living in some of our senior housing throughout all of Alberta that are there not because of the subsidized, not because they need a subsidized housing, but maybe that is their only option or the option that they want to and, and such. So while I understand that there's criteria and it goes to say, you know, you have to display, you know, there's point systems as to, you know, how many points you get because you actually do require subsidized living. Is there a different package that you give or you charge out to those residents for things like meal services or other things outside of the basic home, which I know you can do because they do do it in at the Evergreen or at the Evergreen? Do you charge a different fee for, for different packages at the lodge? To accommodate and to bring in extra revenue so that those truly that are requiring subsidized housing have that available too? As you said, there's a long waitlist at many seniors homes. So we want to make sure as a municipality that we are truly serving those that need the service of subsidized housing. So can you answer anything to that to ensure that truly those that have, that require the subsidized housing? I know especially in Spruce Grove, Stony Plain, there's other options that are out there for people that have maybe more of an affluent bank balance. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Meridian Housing Foundation's focus is to house the low to moderate resident. That is our first priority. Should, should we have openings? Because they cannot be filled with the low to the moderates, then we go into our overcore. That is when we go into our, we call it the overcore list, which is people that exceed the core need income threshold. Currently, people that are above the core need income threshold, basically if they're in here, they're paying the same as the lodge. They pay, they pay their lab grant, but we do not have a model of a mixed model. Our mixed model is something we are looking to do with the Spruce Grove Lodge. Where those, we will, we're looking at a banner more rent system where those that do access lodge that are in that higher end bracket are paying a higher rate. Currently, this lodge was never set up as a mixed model. So our main focus is the low to moderate, and like I said, should somebody, should there be openings, that's when we're going to go into, into another list to fill. But it's not, it's, it's not our first, it's not our first priority. So it, it would definitely be if someone was a high-end income living in here. Their reason they are in here is because we had some, a suite come up that was not taken by a low to moderates and was offered to them because we're not going to go leaving suites empty within a lodge. And we do have high waitlists and they do, it all depends, you know, it, it is, it's, it's formed from a variety of different types of income earners.
Thank you for that. I, I will send that out as a message that to Counselor McNabb as our representative of Parkland County of looking and bringing that up at the board level as to how a person can address those issues because again, our mandate is around, and our focus for, for municipalities is around low-income supportive housing. And I understand and I totally agree that you don't leave a unit empty because of those costs. But I do think as a person moves forward, that there is ways that even in the current model that you have through motions, that things can change and, and it'd be actually appropriate to the geared to their income, and I think that is appropriate, and I think that all taxpayers, nobody wants to pay more, but I think they all understand when they have to pay more. Thanks.
Counselor Kabasik.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lorian, thank you for your presentation. You did speak to us at least once or twice on this matter, and you may have covered the question that I'm going to ask you, but just on the heels of comments you're making about not wanting to leave any, any space unrented. There are, there's the need and the, the income is also an as consideration. In your plans to use the Alliance Building in Stony Plain and moving administration, there would be extra space. I think you indicated that there were two units that you were currently using that, that for administration purposes, had you considered and looked at this in your, in your income revenue stream that if you acquire this building in Stony Plain, that you will have at least two new unit areas? Does, there are costs to, to equip those suites, but had you considered that? Is that what's going to be happening with your current administration space? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kabasik. Yes, yes, the two units that right now are suites will be reconverted into residence suites, and that's where they will provide us with an additional 33,000 annually.
Any additional questions from members of council? Ms. Sain Arno, appreciate the presentation. In the documents, the PowerPoint presentation, it talked about some of the work that was included in the assessment of the building. So it was identified that a new heater, a furnace, and a new water heater required. It did address the issue of asbestos. What in that assessment was the building envelope, I guess, assessed by a qualified consulting firm?
Thank you, Mayor Shagis. They were all hazardous material assessment was done through a firm from Edmonton. They were all qualified firms and the other, the commercial building inspection was done through a firm, I believe is from this area. Counselor McNabb, you might want to help. I, I believe Cabin to Castles are from this area. Maybe even council's familiar. That's who did Cabin to Castles, did the commercials, built inspection report, and Cascade Environmental from Edmonton did the hazardous material assessment.
Yeah, so my question was whether the building envelope was, was looked at. Taking a look at how's, you know, the structural soundness of the facility, is, is the roof in good standing? Will it need significant expenditures to just, potential of roofie leak, leaky roof? Is the foundation structurally sound or there cracks? So those type of issues, I was just curious whether, and perhaps Counselor McNabb can, is knowledgeable on, Counselor McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those questions, and I appreciate those questions. If Lorian could correct me, there was a, through Cabinet Castle, there was a structural envelope review done. If I remember correctly, the roof was just replaced not too many years back, and I'm going to guess 2013, 2014. And for a roof envelope, you know, which has a approximate life expectancy of 20, 25 years before you maybe delve into it again. That's my understanding. And as far as the structure goes, there was some sidewalks sloping towards the, the inside of the building, and that would have to be addressed, and that was talked about in our board meeting that there was some minor, minor type of envelope type things that would have to be looked at. The biggest thing was that you pointed out the furnace and the water would have to be 100% replaced. Superior Electrical was in the building, not required for what our operations would be there, but it's all there already and it doesn't need to be changed. Lorian, I would look for your remembering of that, that report. You know, we, we definitely could probably share that report with council if they, they would want. But when I reviewed it on the board level, it was some minor stuff that was easily addressed. And that, of course, that's my opinion, right? So, Lorian, if you have anything to add, that would be great.
Thank you. The report, the, the, the big key items from the report were stating that the furnace and the and the hot water tank were nearing the end of their life cycle. They're still operational, they're still functioning. It's just that when they look, when they put it in their spreadsheets or data, they would recommend that we look at replacing it for doing renovations because they've exceeded their lifespan. The other, there was a, a minor, like, like Counselor McNabb did mention sidewalks, which are easily, they were just brought forward to our attention, which could easily be addressed. As a, they were there as informing us, they were doing a thorough and informing us that this may be something we want to address down the road. There did not, there was not any signage of anything going into the billing, but brought to our attention to try to be preventative and avoid.
Thank you. Two, one comment. So from my perspective, and you'd mentioned that the square footage probably does exceed the requirements of, of the foundation at this time. Has there been any discussion of possibly leasing some of the excess space to generate some additional revenues? And a question that I have is, is, will the foundation be considering or having a discussion about Section 6.01 of the bylaws that restricts the location of the administration office of the foundation to Stony Plain? I think, you know, and you spoke to being responsible with the, the finances of, of the municipalities that the, who are being requisitioned. And from my perspective, this unnecessarily constrains the foundation from potentially securing a better site and perhaps a better building that meets the needs of the foundation and and probably more importantly, ensuring the board is making the most prudent financial decisions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Shagis. In regards to square footage, I, I believe we're always open, I think, to leasing, should there, there be a need. But I believe right now, this is a great opportunity. Like I said, our maintenance department doesn't even have anything, any storage for themselves. There could be a good component of it, whether it's just the back end of the building that is used for maintenance right now. I think as, you know, I guess that's where my, my thoughts is, is that maintenance doesn't have anything right now, and we can definitely use a good section of that for maintenance. But again, open, open to, you know, I'm sure the board, we're always open to hearing and discussing further options. In regards to bylaws, I believe if, if there's a, a feel or a need by the member municipalities for, for it to be reviewed, that is something I believe that could be brought forward to the board. Thank you.
Thank you for that response. Just looking back to members of council for any additional questions or comments you may have at this point. Counselor McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your questions. And, and you know, we, we have had, through the board, we have had some conversations in regards to the bylaw, and you're absolutely right. And I do agree that in regards to having offices in Stony Plain, the option would be open that up to the three municipalities in, in, as a whole. And it would be something I would look forward to addressing or, or pursuing in the future. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a good comment, and it was talked about briefly and asked why. But, you know, it's something we can talk about. And as far as the, the additional rental space, the board you know, talked about, you know, it, the, the space in perspective of the additional space would have a great opportunity for training opportunity for, for staff members and/or whoever else coming in new with that little bit of open space there. Absolutely, it wouldn't be, in my perspective, as a board member representing Parkland County, bringing forward a, a comment that maybe some additional space within the building could be looked at for opportunity for rental to create some more income. Yeah, it, you know, with the space there, it would be an opportunity to bring that forward and have that conversation. Yeah, I thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Looking to council one final time, any additional comments or questions? And I'm not seeing any. So we do have the motion that was put forward by Counselor Hollins to accept the presentation as information. If you're in support of that, please raise your hand. And that is carried. Thank you, Ms. Sain Arno, and we'll now move to new business under Section 7 of the agenda and Item A1. And I will turn that over to Ms. Swain for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council has heard the request for funding presentation from Meridian Housing Foundation. So the motion before you is that council approve the Meridian Housing Foundation borrowing of up to 2.1 million over 20 years in support of office space purchase in the town of Stony Plain, located at 4,900, 4,904, and 4,908, 53 Ave, Stony Plain as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking for a mover for that motion.
Ms. Maris, Counselor John McNabb, Division 5, and I'll make that motion as read out by Ms. Swain.
And opening up for comments, and I'll move to Counselor Melnick first.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say to Lorian and her team there, thank you for respecting Parkland County's capital policy and working with our staff to bring this item forward to ensure that we have a, a working relationship that is appropriate for both of us. And also wanted to acknowledge that this now meets the requirement underneath the Housing Act that you have brought it forward to the municipality, and I appreciate that as a requirement, and that that's what's happening. Thanks.
Any additional comments or questions from members of council?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just look, just going to provide a little bit of clarity, and I think everybody knows that that the 2.1 is not the purchase of the building, it includes the renovation also, and that was a budget renovation. And so just so everybody knows, it's, 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 it's the dollars to get up and running also. So it's the purchase of the building plus the renovations that are anticipated and, and included some of those upgrades as we were speaking about in changing the sidewalk power, sorry, water and furnaces.
Any additional comments, Counselor Melnick?
Sorry, thank you. So when is your anticipated move date should this be passed by all municipalities? Thanks.
I'm assuming that's for Lori, I'm assuming that's for Lorian, would be my.
One of you, yeah.
And I don't have that date.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. The possession, the conditions go off on Friday, May 28th, and possession date would be June 25th. I believe that's a Friday.
Final comments or questions from any members of council? Seeing none, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And that is carried unanimously. On behalf of council, Ms. Sain Arno, I, if it is supported by all members of council, I hope the facility serves you well. If it is supported by all members of council, I hope the facility serves you well and uh, serves the residents of the uh. Three municipalities well into the future by having uh, the administration of the foundation there, and if there's an opportunity to. Generate some additional uh, revenue um, from excess space there, I'm sure that'll be discussed, so all the best, and thank you for coming in today. With that, we're going to move to uh, a, a section D of our agenda, which is agriculture, community and. Protective services matters, and we'll move to item D one, Ms. Swain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barb Chakal Hardman, Director of Agriculture Services, is prepared to present the resource management. Grant funding request and answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, Agricultural Services is bringing to council a request for a, a decision on approving additional operating expense. And grant revenue to the economic and sustainability program uh, in the amount of thirty five thousand dollars. So as background to this uh, request, uh, agricultural services can apply to the province of Alberta for two. Uh, funding streams. One is through the legislative funding stream, and that supports our activities related to uh, agricultural service board act. Weed control act, pest control act. The second stream of funding is under the resource management funding stream, and with that money, we're able to support some of our. Extension activities resort related to sustainable egg practices, and these are multi-year funding agreements that we enter into the, with the province. And the previous agreement had ended in December of two twenty nineteen, and so we have applied to those, both those funding streams in. Um, the spring of twenty twenty, and we received word in um, the fall of last year, so October twenty twenty. That we had been uh, successful in getting grant funding under the legislative funding stream. Uh, we were reduced in the, in funding from previous years, but we did receive funding. Under that stream. The province at that time, though, did not want to have a decision or make a decision on the uh, resource management stream. Until their fourth quarter, which was um, the spring of this year, and so we received word in uh, March of this year. That we had been successful under the resource management stream, uh, and it was actually an increase in funding from previous years, and we received thirty five thousand dollars. For that uh, funding stream. So under the legislative uh, funding stream, we see, received word soon enough that we were able to make the adjustments in our twenty twenty one budget. However, with the legislative stream, uh, the additional thirty five thousand dollars, we didn't receive word until after council had approved the um, the spring budget. So that's the reason why we're bringing forward this request at this time, to uh, ask council to uh, add that into our budget and, and then the associated expenses. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Chakal Hardman. Can I get a member of council put forward the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. It's Council Melnick, Division six, I'll put forward the motion that council approve an additional operating expense and grant revenue to the. Economic and sustainability program budget in the amount of thirty five thousand. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up for comments or questions. And I am not seeing any. I just want to thank administration for bringing this forward, and certainly anytime uh, we can receive grant funding. From the provincial government, particularly uh, in the environment, fiscal environment we're having today, it's welcome you, so. I'm sure uh, Ms. Chakal Hardman is pleased and her department's pleased to get this funding, so with that, uh, if you're in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. With that, we'll move to uh, section eight of the agenda under communication and eight point three committee reports. And I'll start with Counsel Kavasia.
And uh, Mr. Mayor, before we move to committee reports, uh, just a reminder that we also have G one and B one on the agenda.
My apologies. We will move to. G one, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have Jody Hancock, Director of Engineering Services, and he is prepared to take you through the Moonlight Bay and Wobman Beach. Street lighting request and answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Hello, I'm just gonna check my mic to make sure it's working, and you can see me just fine, I think.
You're safe to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, uh, welcome to this item this morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to it. Uh, again, we're looking at council approval for the installation of streetlights at Moonlight Bay and Wobman Beach. Uh, with the condition that the capital costs be funded through a local improvement. Uh, property owners in Moonlight Bay and Wobman Beach subdivisions have requested street lighting be installed. As per policy C E N zero one six, street lighting, all street lighting requests shall be a. Shall require approval of council as an excerpt of the policy. Uh, this motion is seeking that council approval. Uh, under the same policy, it will highlight that all requests for street lighting. Uh, shall be made in writing to the Director of Engineering Services. Uh, attachment two is an email from the area, from an area resident. That meets that requirement for notification in writing. Uh, this was also provided to committee of the whole on May fourth. Uh, that report of committee of the whole from May fourth is attachment eight and is available for council's review as well. Uh, during the May fourth committee of the whole meeting discussion, there were a few questions asked of administration. Administration has added information to this report in response to those questions asked, and hopefully we've fulfilled or, or have responded accordingly. Uh, as outlined in the policy, the responsibility for capital costs of the developers' costs, or in this case, the cost of the landowners. Uh, this is identified in the policy under clause three in attachment one. The responsibility for operating costs is the county's responsibility, and this is in clause four of the same attachment. Capital costs at this time are estimated to be seventy thousand dollars, which is a, a, a rough summary of twenty lights, three thousand dollars a light. Adding in a small amount of contingency for brush clearing, tree removals, uh, and, and some additional work uh, with connecting the wires. Uh, that may be required. The work includes placing standard lights on existing wood poles. Um, we would complete a detailed cost estimate. Uh, during the design phase, and, and this would be shared with area residents for consideration of local improvements. Operating costs are estimated to be eight thousand dollars annually. Uh, this is based on thirty three dollars per light per month. Again, twenty lights times twelve months, um, assuming that we can complete this work this year. The twenty twenty one estimated cost is around two thousand dollars. Uh, that would be for the last quarter of the year, assuming they're in operation. Uh, lifecycle costs are the responsibility of Fortis, and I've confirmed this directly with a discussion with them. The infrastructure will be owned by Fortis, not the county. Therefore, when a pole or a street light is replaced, this will be done at, by Fortis at no cost to the county. This applies to uh, all lifecycle cost and maintenance with these streetlights. Project funding, as mentioned above, the project costs are estimated to be seventy thousand dollars. Capital costs for the street lighting within industrial areas, commercial areas, multipolish, so multi-parcels residential subdivisions. Will only be considered where the benefiting landowners pay for the capital costs through local improvement charge or direct payment. And that's uh, an excerpt from clause three of the street lighting policy. Should council approve the motion above, administration will initiate a local improvement plan in alignment with municipal government act. Um, I've also included an excerpt of the municipal government act, division seven, section three ninety four. Uh, that's in attachment seven of this report, and I've also added some notes to the margins to help follow through what the steps would be. Parkland County will work with Fortis to complete a design, and the design will be used to create a detailed construction cost estimate. The design and cost estimate will be shared with area landowners. They in turn will need to use that uh, design and that cost estimate. They'll reference that to uh, conduct a petition. They must get a valid petition. With a minimum of two thirds of affected landowners and at least half the assessed value of the properties submitted to county indicating support for the local improvement. Following receipt of a valid petition and finalization of a local improvement plan, the local improvement plan will be shared with the landowners and advertised accordingly. Once advertised, there's an appeal period of thirty days where it will be possible. Uh, for landowners opposed to the local improvement plan to try to gather a second petition, which would be an appeal petition. If there's no appeal, we'll bring forward the local improvement bylaw and the local improvement plan to council for final approval. Following approval of the local improve, uh, following approval of the local improvement bylaw, work can be initiated on the project, and the streetlights will be installed as per the local improvement plan. Area landowners will have the option to pay upfront if they choose to, or they will have the option of a deferred payment over ten years. Um, if the local improvement bylaw is passed, they won't have the ability to opt out of paying either one of those two options. The proposed method to determine the cost share would be on a lot by lot basis to be verified within the local improvement plan, subject to council's approval. Uh, there are approximately eighty lots in the area at a project cost of seventy thousand dollars. This is eight hundred and seventy five thousand. Not eight hundred and seventy five thousand, eight hundred and seventy five dollars per lot. Owners of multiple lots would pay for each lot that they own. If you own two lots, it's one thousand seven hundred and fifty three lots, four lots, it's two times, three times, whatever that. Uh, per lot price is. The design standards, we are aiming for a very basic design. On wood power poles using existing power feeds. Um, the signal heads are a Fortis Alberta standard Cobra head. Which is a, the, the basic entry level uh, streetlight. Uh, they will have LED bulbs to maximize energy efficiency. And they will have downward direct lighting, which is enabled, uh, which is to reduce light emissions. We asked Fortis to go out on site with one of their representatives to drive through the area prior to today. Um, they were able to go out the week of May tenth to fourteenth and visually confirm that, that the proposed. Plan or the proposed design is feasible. They did not identify any uh, significant concerns at this point in time. Uh, of course, that will be verified through final design, and, and a quote will be developed off of that to uh, ensure that there's. Accurate scope and budget on the streetlight project. The project management is done by Fortis. Uh, of course, administration will have to build and develop the local improvement plan. That portion is done by the county, but once it's approved, and once we have a plan in place that will go to Fortis, they will do the construction management. There'll be no additional resources by the county, other than communications probably to uh, keep residents in touch and informed. Fortis has confirmed they have the capacity to complete the work in twenty twenty one, subject to the date of approval. Uh, crime statistics was an area that uh, council higher, committee of the whole had expressed an interest in. And we have included some information in the attached documents, a, a little bit of a crime summary for the area. We did ask for a heat map, and we're not able to provide one in the time uh, that it took to prepare for this meeting today. Um, one of the things that the uh, set, the county's enforcement team identified was the SEPTED principles, which is crime prevention through environmental design. Through this, the residence property is assessed by the peace officers, recommendations are made in deterring crime. When completing a risk assessment, you know, they want to look at the environment, the crime history and the environmental conditions. Most common recommendation is add additional lighting to high traffic areas, such is the case here. Uh, there's more information there, I won't read it line by line. I understand that Brad Backstrom may also be available on this call today with. The county's enforcement team if there are specific questions to crime statistics and crime information. I've outlined how it aligns with strategic plan and the policy. I'll reiterate the financial impact, uh, because I think this is an important element. The total project cost is seventy thousand dollars. Um, capital costs are to be funded through a local improvement bylaw, which would be funded by the landowners. The operating costs are estimated to be two thousand dollars in twenty twenty one. The annual cost is eight thousand dollars. Uh, this would need to be worked into the annual operating budgets at the rate and appropriate time. Uh, the twenty twenty one cost can be absorbed within existing county budgets for this year. Um, with that, that's the presentation today. Um, I'm happy to turn it back over to council for any discussion.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hancock for that. Can I get a mover for the motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Counsel, Kabasi, Division three. I will move that council approve the installation of streetlights at Moonlight Bay and Wobman Beach. With the condition that the capital costs be funded through a local improvement, and I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, to Mr. Hancock, um, uh, you have outlined the policies with regard to um. Um, installation of street lighting, uh, you talked about a um, sort of a petition or the, the. Agreement to required of the community to go ahead with this uh, seventy thousand dollar uh, capital cost. What percentage of the residents uh, are needed to uh, be majority so that this goes forward?
To Counsel Kabasi, through the chair, uh, two thirds must vote in favor. Plus, it has to account for fifty percent of the assessed value of the lands. So again, it can't be two thirds of vacant lots.
Counsel Melnick.
Thank you very much. Um, often when we do a capital project for uh, pavement and, and roads. We'll find that uh, in some of these subdivisions, there is areas that are um. Um, under the, under the title of Parkland County or deemed Parkland County roads. Do you know if there's any uh, uh, lots? Do you know if there's any of that space in here where we would be required to pay our portion as the county in this area?
So I would refer to attachment four is probably a good attachment to go to, and I'll just pause so everybody can get to that one. Um, and, and I don't have an, an exact answer for you as to how many lots would be county-owned lots. I believe the lots that are. Highlighted or shaded in a light green color on the southern end of the development area. I believe those lots are either owned by uh, the province or owned by the county. Uh, what I will say about that, though, is those are also in places where there are undeveloped road allowances. And there are no power uh, poles, or we would not put streetlights in those areas. So again, I, I, I want to be cautious with that. When we come back with the local improvement plan, we'll have a definitive answer for that. But I don't believe there's MR parcels that would be a contributing uh, person to the capital costs, which I think is.
Counsel McNabb.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hancock, for your presentation, and um. Yeah, I figured another question in my head, but um, my question was in regards to um, the operational costs of the street lighting and um. And I understand Parkland County has uh, numerous streetlights throughout um, various different areas and communities. Um, in perspective, uh, I, I guess the question would be, we have operating costs already in Parkland County. Would you know the, the overall number, what, what we're paying for street lighting um, throughout the entire Parkland County, um? And, and, and I'm sorry, i- it's probably a, a, a number you would have to go look up, but um, in relationship to. An operating cost here and what we're already paying, what, what would that be?
Uh, through the chair to Counsel McNabb, I, I'm gonna hesitate on that. I'll maybe refer to uh, Mr. Um. McGowan, if he knows offhand, but I don't have that number right in front of me, and I, I don't want to venture a guess. I, I could have that prepared at, uh, at a later date if you need that.
Yeah, and then that'd be okay. It's probably something that people should know and, and um, and, and I'd pay at a later date. And I guess my question, uh, my other question that Counsel Melnick brought up is, there's lots of um. Undeveloped road allowance, street allowances, and undeveloped lots, so that my, my understanding is um. This area may not be a benefiting area of the street lighting, so it would be exempt. And I guess, um, and, and that's kind of where I'm, I'm thinking, so um, throughout the, the model. Um, where the street lighting is going there, is there other residents, like you had mentioned, there's roughly eighty residents that would be benefiting from it? Is there other residents within the, in the area that would not be benefiting from it?
Uh, through the chair to Counsel McNabb, I, I understand your question. Um, so what. We have on attachment three is a proposed streetlight layout. What we would do in detailed design is show where those lights. Would uh, touch the properties and where they would light up. Um, there may be some. That through the petitioning process, there might be an entire street that says we absolutely want no streetlights. And, and we will be respective of that discussion as it kind of goes. It's a little bit of a moving target. This is the proposal. Um, someone like Wobman Beach, they may choose to say we don't want any streetlights whatsoever, and they can't get it, and then the other one goes ahead. Um, Moonlight Bay does want streetlights on every road, and they want twice the number of poles. I, I, I don't know that at this point in time. I just. We, we're trying to figure that out, this is a proposal that's. we're trying to figure that out. This is the proposal that's here and we would draw a circle around each light to say that's where the light would touch the properties. And my assumption is if they're touching the property, then there's a benefit.
That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Mr. McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on the question that John had earlier in terms of how much do we spend on power for streetlights and I believe our streetlight bill is approximately twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars per month. So we spend approximately three hundred and thirty thousand dollars on energy per year.
Any additional questions or comments from members of council? I have one question for administration. Mr. Hancock, you had talked about how the streetlights reduce, it's seen as a crime prevention measure through environmental design. I'm assuming that there's benefits for individuals, property owners. Because if you take a look at properties that are in high crime areas, so calm, you know, common to break in and theft. Those properties typically sell for less. So is there a potential situation arising where the assessed value of these properties will increase and subsequently there'll be additional recognizing it will only be incremental, but additional property tax that would be realized by Parkland County, which would offset some of those operating costs?
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mr. Hancock is having some technical issues. I believe his computer just crashed. Of course, the answer to your question is really a question that should be probably posed to our assessment department and I'm not sure that the assessment would necessarily go up. So I'm not sure that we will see additional revenue as a result of streetlights. But that's always a common question, whether it's pavement in front of their house or streetlights or sidewalks. Does it improve or increase the assessed value of their home? And our previous discussions kind of suggested that it would make your property more attractive and probably easier to sell, but not necessarily and an increase in assessment. So I believe the assessment department really doesn't look outside of the property itself and then the surrounding properties. So if it does have a an influence on the assessment, it's just really quite minor.
Thank you. I believe where assessment department doesn't take a look at is the value of property sales comparable properties in the area. So there is an increase in those lots because people are comforted by the fact that there's a decrease in criminal activity. People will pay, may pay more for those lots and that may be recognized. I'll look to members of council to see if there's any additional comments or questions on this motion. And I am not seeing any, so I'll ask members of council, please raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move to section B under Chief Administrative Officer, and this is the agenda item that was added to today's agenda. I'll turn that over to Ms. Swain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the motion before you is that council vote to cancel the June first, twenty twenty one Committee of the Whole meeting.
Thank you. And if I can get a mover for that motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Daryl Hall in Division four, I moved the motion as read by Ms. Swain.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? Counselor Melnick.
I just wanted to articulate that while we definitely had it scheduled with the fire in the Tomahawk region, a great many of our resources, staff resources were occupied and some of the items that were being planned to be presented for council's consideration at that time obviously had to be put on the back burner while they were focusing their attention. So I totally understand, and if any public is listening, that is why the meeting would be canceled, it was being proposed to be canceled.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Counselor Kabasik.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, just on that note, with those items not being presented and a number of other items that aren't coming forward, the agenda is very, very light. And so rather than schedule a meeting for the sake of a meeting, those items can be carried over to another time. So I support the motion.
Any additional comments from members of council? Not seeing any, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion that is carried. We'll now move to committee reports under section eight point three, and I will start with Counselor Kabasik, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few items that I'd like to report on. I attended a couple of seminars. One was the Alberta Community Crime Prevention Association. They held their virtual conference on May twelfth and thirteenth and just briefly, they had local, national, international information, and they did schedule both urban and rural focused sessions. They also talked about crime prevention strategies and advances in the province with 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 new crime rush approaches. One, one, one really interesting seminar was a senior policy advisor with the Netherlands Ministry of Justice and Security. He addressed how Holland managed to cut cut crime, improve security, restore the capacity and authority of criminal law. He noted that the Netherlands population is about seventeen point four million with the Brussels capital city population of close to one million. And this was the gateway for drugs that came in from South America into Europe. And he said, using the strategies that they did to reduce crime, a drug using population over the past twenty years, twenty five years has declined from twenty five thousand to three thousand and attributed a crime rate reduction of forty percent. The murder rate reduced fifty percent and crime suspects in the age of age twelve to eighteen years declined sixty seven percent. He covered tools for effective policing, one being an institution for respected Repeat Offenders Act, where recidivism is dealt with more harshly. An effort is made to keep youth out of the penal system as long as possible. They called it a do no harm philosophy. Another session that I found interesting was Lessons Learned in Australia. Popular nighttime economy in in Sydney after hosting the Olympics in twenty two thousand left a major, major negative impact, a pub culture that brought alcohol related to crime that was this shifted strategically and politically to turn around that that economy and to benefit the community. The conference covered building capacity and rural crime prevention, a less law and more order to end violent crime. And I believe that Parkland County Patrol members are participating in this conference would have gained many insights into building safe communities. I also participated, and Mr. Chair, in a economic development association, a leader summit on May nineteenth and twentieth and from the perspectives and speaker topics, I believe that Parkland County, we have a good mandate, a positive mandate and vision that's well positioned to meet opportunities that were presented at this workshop. Mr. Fernandez, I believe, was attending as well. The focus was on the new reality where new mindsets, political and economic structures, business models and products and services are critical to Alberta's post COVID pandemic. And Alberta's future in energy, agriculture, agrofoods, forestry, aerospace, tourism, transportation and logistics were discussed by expert panel speakers. Other topics addressed by other experts were technology, creative industries, a film, culture and digital media, life sciences, health, biotech, clean tech, petrochemicals and pipelines. Jack Mintz with the Premier's Economic Recovery Council, Gary Marr, former minister and mayor, premier candidate, CAiona with Canada West Foundation and Adam LaPage, President of the Business Council of Alberta, were a panel discussing Alberta reimagined, reinvented and repositioned. Mr. Marr noted that Alberta, through the University of Alberta, is one of the top AI artificial intelligence centers in the world. They presented the economic development awards. The big winners were the City of Calgary with economic development through film TV. And the small town category Vermillion was a winner with broadband retention and attraction. I also attended with Counselor Melnick, the Community Sustainability Committee meeting on May nineteenth. Patrol did a presentation and Martin Figo presented planning framework documents for review of the committee. On May twenty first, the Villanue Landing Network met and Parkland County had contributed to a study that was proposed. And so the governance and financial review findings and recommendation. The area master plan overview and engagement report was presented. That report is being circulated and by the end of August, the Villanue Landing Network is looking for the working group confirmations and partner commitments. And this will come to council for discussion. I know that Mr. Fernandez will be will be dealing with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Hollins.
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor McNabb.
I too have nothing to report. Thank you very much.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you very much. In addition to the community sustainability that Council Kabasik had referred to, I attended the virtual RMA district three meeting. I have to say it was one of the most productive meetings that I've attended with them. What they did is they created individuals into breakout rooms and asked a variety of questions. And I know Mayor Shag is attended as well. We did speak about it. I text about it a little bit after and thought that it really did open up great conversations in your breakout rooms. They talked about what is important to you in and around. Of course, they asked about oil and gas, how's that working in your community? Economic development was another area that was discussed. Our policing cost was another comment that was talked about, but it was really, I thought, a much more, a much more involved group, and I really wish they would do more of that kind of presentations even within the RNA conference. I found that those breakout sessions were really quite good. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. I have nothing further to report. I'll just echo Counselor Melnick's thoughts on on the breakout sessions that were held by the RMA. It did facilitate some very good discussion, a smaller level discussion, which really generated more thought and I think added to the value and the benefit of the day and hopefully it'll provide some some more support and direction to the board the board for RMA as they meet and have these discussions with the provincial government. Counselor Kabasik.
I just wanted to certainly agree with your comments. I did participate and in one area, I was able to provide some comments. They're talking about fire and emergency services. So I agree with Counselor Melnick and Mayor on the effectiveness of that meeting.
Thank you. Can I get a mover for the motion to accept the community reports as information, please?
Mr. Mayor, it's Counselor John McNabb, Division five. I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you're in favor. And that is carried unanimously, and that brings us to the conclusion of today's agenda, and we'll adjourn at eleven fifteen. Thank you.